God can hear us with a sense system. Father in heaven, thank you for the graciousness of this day, the beauty of the day. Thank you for this moment, time in the process of business that we make a decision, guide our thoughts, help us to walk by faith, not just by sight, and help us to honor you by the way we live our lives. Thank you for this institution, for its leadership, for the students that walk the halls, for the teachers that teach, for the people that care for the campus. Help us to be grateful for so many blessings. I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
James?
Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me, honor the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Thank you.
I would have thought it would have been your other name when you kicked in.
Well, there's another lip here.
Purpose of this special meeting is to conduct a public hearing on a proposal to adopt the voter approved tax rate. Is there anyone here wishes to speak to the board about this during this public hearing? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody from board. My name is Howard Arie, and I live in Harker Heights. Just a few brief comments. I did watch last week's board meeting, and I appreciate you all publicizing this on YouTube. I think it's very, very helpful for the public bill to see that. I was alarmed at the move to the voter approval rate after multiple years of being at the no new revenue rate. It was really a kind of a shocker to see such a drastic move upward, a 7% increase in the tax rate. One would expect a lot more revenue be gained from that. I was also distressed to see the tax rate that was miscalculated last week, and I know that was eventually corrected. But it came before, and those numbers were so obviously out of kilter, I just was kind of stunned. I listened to the board discussion about it in the presentations, and I do acknowledge that Belcat prepares that. I used to be the vice chair of Belcat. I understand that. But it's not the requirement of Belcat to do that. It's actually done as a service, not as a mandatory service under tax code. And what that kind of implies is that each board and taxing entity had that ability to do those calculations internally, and that also means to check it. And also, of course, the absolute responsibility of boards to make sure the numbers, especially taxing decisions, are done with the correct. So I'm glad that was done. I actually appreciate Mr. Pierce, you questioning that because I think you sensed that something was not right. I did, before those tax rates were corrected and also this morning, looked at the budget one pager to understand the revenue numbers that came in. And this is under the other financial information, and from where I can gather, it's really the only place where the public can see any semblance of the budget for the Central Texas College is on this one pager. So I wanted to see what revenue was gained from this decrease. But what really caught me is that the revenue increase in this new one with the corrected voter approval rate is really the exact same revenue with the incorrect voter approval rate, I mean, down to the exact dollar. So the question I would have is, are those revenues truly correct? I mean, with the incorrect voter approval rate and the corrected voter approval rate, are we really with to the same dollar? That number, of course, being $14,333,214. That also shows a negative 5% decrease in the revenue intake with those taxes. And it's hard to imagine, because every other taxing entity had a growth in the taxable values. So to see a 7% increase in the tax rate manifest as a 5% reduction in the revenues, it's hard to reconcile. And I would just ask that you all check that. And since this is a public hearing on the topic, I hope those questions can be answered here at public, today at a public hearing. The last thing, and I do, I check tax code a lot. A tax increase of this magnitude, and I acknowledge, I think some people made comment that it was just a few dollars per month, and I understand that. But there's a lot of few dollars per month being given by a lot of taxing entities. And there's a lot of people who aren't as well-to-do on that dais, on your dais, as there are out in our communities. So few, five, six dollars a month starts to make a difference. And that's why Texas tax code has requirements that notices are put out properly in a timely fashion so people can understand what those tax increases are and be alerted to when those are going to occur. I would ask you to check tax code 26.065. I don't think you met your tax code requirements on the supplemental notices for seven days. I think if you ask your IT team, you're going to find out that you were less than seven days posting that notice online on your homepage. And if so, I'd ask you really to correct that and do that the right way.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your comments. In response to your request for information, I would suggest that you put that in print and that we would have the people who handle the numbers answer you specifically about that question. It's not our procedure to respond to.
Sure enough. I would just hope you, certainly before you taking a tax rate increase, you'd make sure that things were done in accordance with tax.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? It's now time to receive a motion. General Rea, would you present a motion to us?
I move to rescind the proposed tax rate of .1033 set at the August 20 meeting and set the proposed tax rate at the voter approval rate of .0883.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion, question, comments? Do you favor that motion? You signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Mr. Barton, you and your team want to give us a word about the motion that has just been approved?
Before we do that, I'd like to ask the question about the notice. I think that's important. Do we have any information that says that IT did not give exactly seven days' notice when we posted this meeting?
There's a requirement that the newspaper posting be in there five days, once, five days before. And that was posted last Wednesday or Thursday.
Five days.
Five days before.
There is another requirement that it be posted online for seven days.
And it was posted the day after our Tuesday workshop.
Posted Tuesday after the workshop?
Be the Wednesday, the Wednesday after our Tuesday workshop.
Tomorrow will be Wednesday. It'll be seven days.
Today is the seventh day.
Now, if it was posted on Wednesday, it has to be posted a full 24 hours, so you can't start until, unless you post it at midnight on Wednesday.
It was posted as quick as possible.
That's not my question. My question is, did we actually have seven 24-hour periods between the posting and this meeting? That's the question.
I think it'd be impossible to do.
Why not? It should already be ready to post.
The Brazel district does that form, 5876. It's the notice of this hearing, and she prepares that form. She got it to me Wednesday afternoon, or Tuesday afternoon, and we posted it Wednesday on the website.
What time?
During the day.
No, no, but an hour. Give me an hour. It was posted on Wednesday.
I would say in the middle of the day.
In the afternoon?
I'd say around noon.
We don't know for sure. Can we find out? Can we look that up?
You could call recess, and we could try to find out.
Does anybody have a computer that can look up the actual posting and see what it says right now?
There's not, it's not date timestamped on the website.
That's the problem. I mean, just to pull it up on the website won't tell you when it was posted. So that's why I'm suggesting.
He testified that it was. So I heard him incorrect. He said it did not give the seven days' notice based on the day it was posted. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. It's exactly correct.
I didn't hear more. So I'm mystified, and I don't understand all about this electronic G-Wiz stuff. I've got one of those iPhones and all that stuff. But it seems to me that it's pretty clear, a 24-hour period starts at midnight and ends 11:59.
She got me the form the following day.
If we didn't post it correctly, and we had this meeting, even if it was 15 minutes difference, we're incorrect. We need to correct that. We need to be sure we're on the exact.
There's way too many assumptions in all this conversation. Do we need to take a recess to get this clarified?
I would recommend that. Yes, sir.
All right. Is there a motion that we recess to discover? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's do that. Now, who's going to take the lead?
Who's got the computer?
Call IT department.
I'm going to call.
The call of the medium back into order, and I will announce executive session for the board to have a conference with the attorney. And we will, it's 1:22. We will go into executive session and return in a moment. Return from executive session, the time is 1:48. And I'd like a comment from our attorney before we proceed.
Yes, sir. After looking at some things and having some discussion both with staff and with the board, it is my recommendation that, to be conservative and safest, I would recommend that you postpone having the public hearing and voting on the tax rate. Again, very conservative view, but I believe it is the proper route for you to take.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
General, your?
And I'll make a motion to reconsider the vote setting the tax rate.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I would follow up with a motion to postpone the public hearing and vote on the tax rate on a meeting at 17 September.
At 12:30 PM?
No, our meeting, we have--
A special meeting?
Our special meeting, we have to be announced for the 17th September.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that motion? Any discussion, questions? In favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Anything else before we adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion been made and seconded.